Mini Roundabout is a one-lane roundabout and it's a yielding intersection. You don't need to stop unless you have to stop for a pedestrian or a car. We're willing to try out new ideas and this is a perfect opportunity to try out something that's less expensive and as a safer alternative for a stop sign or a traffic light. We want to reduce the amount of potential accidents between pedestrians, vehicles, and bicycles and also trucks. We do have trucks that go through that intersection as well. So we're trying to improve safety for everyone and we're using them on our way to do it. First of all, you start before you enter the intersection. As you approach the intersection, you look for the pedestrians because the pedestrian crossings are actually pulled out a little ways from that roundabout. Then you can pull forward past the pedestrian point and start looking for the vehicles. And if there's no vehicles in your way, you can proceed into the roundabout. If there's a vehicle, you might have to delay a few seconds before you can enter. Once you are able to get in, pull in right behind somebody or if it's empty, go in and then proceed counterclockwise. And you can make an immediate right if you're going right or you can kind of go around the intersection just a little bit to go forward or you can go complete or do a kind of a 270 degrees to be able to make a left-hand turn. Or some people might just want to go back into the downtown area so they could do a complete turn and go back the same direction they were coming.
Council Stillwater Municipal Building 723 S Lewis Stillwater, oklahomastillwater.org. Regular meeting agenda: October 19th, 2015, 5:30 p.m. Council hearing room. Note: The mayor and members of the city council will gather prior to the regular meeting in conference room 1112 B beginning at 5:00 p.m. this date for dinner. No city council business will be discussed or acted upon at this time. This is not a closed session and members of the public and press are welcome to attend. Meals will only be provided to the city council and staff. One. Call meeting to order. Two. Pledge of allegiance. Three. Proclamations and presentations. Domestic violence awareness month. Four. Consent docket items listed on the consent docket are routine administrative matters that may be approved by a single vote with or without discussion. Councilors may remove individual items from the consent docket and place them on items removed from consent docket for additional consideration. The city council will take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on these items either collectively as part of the consent docket or individually under items removed from consent docket. Approval of minutes: Special meeting October 5th, 2015; Regular meeting October 5th, 2015; Executive session October 19th. C. Construction fund payment to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the Western Road Improvement Project (CC15-120D). Sheer Heart Museum Quarterly Report (C). 2015 Community Development Block Grant Contract (CC15-127F). Amendment to Operations Department 2015 to '16 Budget (CC15-1245). Public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. The city council will hear comments on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing from speakers who have submitted a written request in accordance with Secretary 2-25 Stillwater City Code. General information regarding communication with the city council in this manner is found on the reverse side of the agenda. Six. Items removed from consent docket. Seven. Public hearings. The city council will hear public comments, discuss, and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "public hearings" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. Receive public comment regarding a request to close a portion of the Fifth Avenue right-of-way[450.81][450.81](CC15-123B). Receive public comment regarding a request to close a utility easement at 1712 South Hidden Oaks (CC15-121C). Receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment for Sixth Avenue and Kings Avenue from the RSS Family District to the O. Offish District (CC15-122). See staff memo to postpone to November 16th, 2015. Eight. General orders. The city council will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "general orders" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. Discussion regarding the formation of a City of Stillwater Ad-Hoc Committee to assist with the 2016 Martin Luther King Day Celebration (CC15-126B). Project recommendations for the 2016 Pavement Management Program (CC15-125). Nine. Resolutions. The city council will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "resolutions" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. None. Ten. Ordinances. The city council will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "ordinances" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. First reading: None. Second reading: Ordinance: No. 3,326 An ordinance zoning property generally located in the northeast quarter (Nebraska/4) of Section 25, 25 Township 20, 20 North Range 2, 2 East of the Indian Meridian B. Ordinance: No. 3,327 An ordinance zoning annexed property generally located in the northeast quarter (Nebraska/4) of Section 25, 25 Township 20, 20 North Range 2, 2 East of the Indian Meridian S degrees. A plus minus sign. Agriculture District (C). Ordinance: No. 3,328 An ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land located at 8799 East Mercury Avenue from IG General Industrial District to NTZ Neighborhood Transition Zone (D). Ordinance: No. 3,329 An ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land located at 8799 East Mercury Avenue from IG General Industrial District to CS Commercial Shopping District. Eleven. Reports from officers and board's announcements and remarks about matters of general interest may be made by councilors, the city manager, or the city attorney at this time. Items of city business that may require discussion or action, including a vote or series of votes, are listed below. Miscellaneous items from the city attorney. I request for executive session pursuant to 25O's. Section E307b1 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Dan Galloway. B. Miscellaneous items from the city manager. C. Miscellaneous items from the city council. I discussion about scheduling items for upcoming meetings. Twelve. Questions and inquiries. Thirteen. Executive session. Confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Dan Galloway. Fourteen. Return from executive session. Possible action regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Dan Galloway. Fifteen. Adjourn. Stillwater Utilities Authority. Stillwater Municipal Building 723 S Lewis Stillwater, oklahomastillwater.org. Regular meeting agenda: Council hearing room October 19th, 2015 immediately following city council meeting. One. Call meeting to order. Two. Consent docket items listed on the consent docket are routine administrative matters that may be approved by a single vote with or without discussion. Trustees may remove individual items from the consent docket and place them on items removed from consent docket for additional consideration. The Board of Trustees will take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on these items either collectively as part of the consent docket or individually under items removed from consent docket. Approval of minutes: Regular meeting October 5th, 2015. Three. Public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. The trustees will hear comments on agenda items from speakers who have submitted a written request in accordance with Secretary 2-25 Stillwater City Code. General information regarding communication with the trustees in this manner is found on the reverse side of the agenda. Four. Items removed from the consent docket. The trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "items removed from the consent docket" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. Five. General orders. The trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "general orders" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. Curbside Glass Recycling Pilot Program Review (SOA15-53A) with Circle 6, 9 pounds. Six. Reports from officers and board's announcements and remarks about matters of general interest may be made by the trustees, the general manager, or the general council at this time. Items of authority business that may require discussion or action, including a vote or series of votes, are listed below. Seven. Adjourn. Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Stillwater Municipal Building 723 S Lewis Stillwater, oklahomastillwater.org. Regular meeting agenda: October 19th, 2015 immediately following city council and Stillwater Utilities Authority meetings. Council hearing room. One. Call meeting to order. Two. Consent docket items listed on the consent docket are routine administrative matters that may be approved by a single vote with or without discussion. Trustees may remove individual items from the consent docket and place them on items removed from consent docket for additional consideration. The Board of Trustees will take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on these items either collectively as part of the consent docket or individually under items removed from consent docket. Approval of minutes: Special meeting September 14th, 2015b. Contract with Adfor Urban Planning Services (C). Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Contract Extension for 2016. Three. Public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. The city council will hear comments on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing from speakers who have submitted a written request in accordance with Secretary 2-25 Stillwater City Code. General information regarding communication with the city council in this manner is found on the reverse side of the agenda. Four. Items removed from consent docket. Five. General orders. The trustees will discuss and take action at this meeting, including a vote or series of votes on each item listed under "general orders" unless the agenda entry specifically states that no action will be taken. Presentation of Commercial Economic Development Districts (B). Authorize staff to initiate a West End Tax Increment District (TIF) 6. Adjourn.
On November 10th, Stillwater voters will consider the renewal of the current half-cent transportation sales tax through October 2026.
Many cities choose to collect their transportation funds through sales tax because approximately one-third is paid by nonresidents who work, visit, or shop in Stillwater.
To reconstruct two lane miles of a city street, the city budgets about $1 million. Currently, the half-cent transportation sales tax generates approximately $4 million annually. The city manages 440 lane miles of pavement, 28 bridges, over 60 signalized intersections, more than 7,000 traffic signs, and 30 miles of bike lanes and bike-share lanes.
In order for the city to manage its assets through the transportation sales tax program, these projects are divided into three separate categories: asset management, safety and mobility, and corridor improvement.
Asset management is basically, in the transportation department, what we do to maintain our transportation system. We have three major categories of assets: our pavements, our bridges, and our traffic signal system. All these things need regular maintenance and repair. It's a core focus of our program. Safety and mobility is how we make our transportation system work. First of all, we need it to be safe for all the users on the corridor, whether that's vehicles, freight, bicyclists, pedestrians, transit. And we also need those folks to have reliable movement throughout the city. Corridor improvements is where we put together asset management and safety and mobility on, say, a mile-long corridor or larger, where we're basically maintaining an asset, making it safe, and providing mobility for the future. Examples of this include recent reconstruction, say, of Country Club Road, upcoming projects that we have on Western Road and Perkins Road, where we look at those mile-long corridors to make widening and improvements.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 19th City Council meeting. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I forgot to call the meeting to order, so the meeting is now officially going. And we have a proclamation tonight, and Councillor Nahara is going to present the proclamation as a Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Whereas domestic violence will affect one in four women in the United States during their lifetime, and whereas the problem of domestic violence is a blight upon the health of all American communities, large and small, and whereas the Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services helps the victims of domestic violence in our community by providing shelter, counseling, and other forms of needed assistance, and whereas last year Wings of Hope housed 79 women, 112 children in their shelter, provided counseling for roughly nearly 300 victims, and assisted with more than 330 emergency protective orders. Now, therefore, I, Miguel Nahara, Stillwater City Councillor, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
So very grateful to the city for the proclamation and for acknowledging it is an issue in our community, but we are the Wings of Hope. We're here to provide our committee members with a safe place and hope. So, thank you again. We appreciate it very much.
And we appreciate what Wings of Hope does and your entire staff. I know you work hard, and you work long hours, and you help a lot of victims. So, we're very appreciative, very happy you're in our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to the Consent Docket. Councillors, does anyone wish to remove an item? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero.
Before we move on, I did want to just point out one thing in our Consent Docket: the Charar Museum. And it was a wonderful report, Mr. Galloway, that we received from Amy Bryant, the Director. And I think that's a wonderful museum that is not well-known in the city. And I just appreciate all of the hard efforts and work that they do during the year. They partner with Stillwater Public Library, they partner with the One Datorium, they bring wonderful exhibits. And this Sunday, we're going to celebrate the 30th anniversary year of our sister cities. And so I think it's a wonderful...I wanted to recognize them for they put a lot of effort into their report, and so I wanted to say thank you for all they do.
And I believe anyone can come at 1:30 to the museum and...
Yes, this Sunday, the 25th.
Help us welcome the Kamioka delegation, who will be here from Japan. So, we look forward to that. Thank you, Councillor Zanotti. Takes us to public comment on agenda, and we do not have anything, so we are going to move to Item 7, Public Hearings. And Item A, receive public comment regarding a request to close a portion of the Fifth Avenue right-of-way, CC-15-123. Mr. Dormand, did we have good notice on this? Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, I'd like to ask our Development Services Director, Paula Dennison, to provide the report on this issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a request that may be a little familiar to some of you. This request to close a portion of Fifth Avenue between Perkins Road and Dryden Street actually came before the council about a year ago. And there was some concern with adjacent property owners, and the direction of the council at that time was for the applicant to go back and meet with the property owner and see if they could come to any agreement. That has happened, and the agreement was included in your packets, I believe. So, therefore, we are back to proceeding with this closing request. The property is what you see on the screen. It's outlined in the hatched area. This is the segment right-of-way of Fifth Avenue between Perkins Road and Dryden Street that circles around and turns into Fifth. You can see a portion only of the right-of-way has even been constructed. The rest of it is raw vacant land. There are some findings that it is not fully constructed. There are utilities within this easement, but as part of the vacating process at District Court, easements over those utilities can be reserved through that vacation process, so there doesn't have to be an additional expense to the applicant item before y'all to rededicate any of those easements for the utilities. And there may be some utilities needed in the future because this is right at the Perkins and Sixth intersection, and this area up Perkins Road may be affected by it in order to loop some utilities in the future. But that's future items. That's not part of this consideration. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just want to point out that is right next to the Sonic Drive-In, right to the south of that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. This is the Sonic, and this is where the tax office and donut shop, Kenan's has this. This used to be the old Wonder Bread store, and now Kenan's has taken it over as well.
Okay, Councillors, any questions?
Just a comment. It's good to see that the property owners could get together and reach an agreement. That's the way we want to have it happen, so good to hear.
Very good to hear. I will open the public hearing if there are no questions. Okay, thank you, Ms. Dennison. And we have one speaker for the public hearing, Ms. Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. I'm here representing the two applicants. Paula did a great job covering everything. I'm just here if you've got any additional questions.
Councillors?
Okay. They have come together in agreement, so it's wonderful right now.
We're all pleased, very pleased.
Good energy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And staff, is there a recommendation?
Yes, this is one of those items that does not go to the Planning Commission. It just comes directly from the request and staff review to the council. So, staff's recommendation is approval with the reservation of any needed easement over the existing utilities at the vacating process through District Court.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve CC-15-123 with...Ms. Dennison, you want to say that again?
The reservation of the easements at District Court.
Okay. All right, please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Item B, receive public comment regarding a request to close a utility easement at 1712 South Hidden Oaks, CC-15-121. Mr. Dormand, did we have good notice?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Dennison to continue with this report, please.
Be happy to. This is, again, a closing, and the portion of the easement, this is a general utility easement. It is the green area that's outlined in the red hatch. Hidden Oaks is west of Range on the north side of 19th. So, it's at one of the furthest extents of the City of Stillwater in the southwest area of town. The subdivision was developed prior to it being annexed into the city. You can see the white area. If this easement were extended, this white area, that used to be the easement, but the property owners on this property came through and asked for it to be closed and vacated also. So, when that happens, when this one goes through, if it does, by your action tonight, and then District Court, it will also turn white on our mapping. That way, there's a record of it having been there, but that it is no longer a public easement. There are no utilities in this easement, and the easement is really not needed for anything. Be happy to answer any questions that you have on this one.
Councillors? Okay. I will...we don't have anyone to speak at the public hearing, so I will open it and close it, and ask staff if there's a recommendation.
Yes, staff recommends approval of this request.
Any questions, Councillors? Or is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Item number CC-15-121. Please vote. And that item is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us...Item C is postponed. John, we do need a motion on this one, though.
The request is to postpone this to November 16th.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Still move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone to November...Item CC-15-122 until November 16th, 2015. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to General Orders, and Item A is discussion regarding the formation of a City of Stillwater Ad-Hoc Committee to assist with the 2016 Martin Luther King Day Celebration, CC-15-126. Count Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was approached by some citizens whom I would like to appoint to an ad hoc committee: Karen Washington, Earl Mitchell, Ed Long, Martha McMillan. And I would like to read just a short piece that was submitted by Karen Washington explaining the purpose behind this ad hoc committee. "A group of citizens in Stillwater would like to put a new face on the Martin Luther King Celebration in Stillwater, Oklahoma. We would like a more unified effort to include the entire community to plan and participate in a variety of events for this holiday. The MLK Day of Service was intended to empower individuals, strengthen communities, bridge barriers, create solutions to social problems, and move us closer to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. A planning committee consisting of representation of our community with the support of our city officials would make this a reality, not just words. This is a day of interracial and intercultural cooperation and sharing. We're requesting the City of Stillwater to take the lead in showing their support of our goal to take on the challenges of economic inequality as well as racial inequality in our community. Our efforts could bring so many people from different cultural backgrounds together in such a vibrant spirit of brother and sisterhood. Martin Luther King Day is not a black holiday, but a people's holiday, whether you are African-American, Hispanic, Native American, Caucasian, or Asian-American. His dream included people of all races and religions." And I would propose that the Quality of Life Committee Subcommittee of the council, which includes Councillor Nahara and myself and our staff representative, Mr. John McClenni, would work with this ad hoc committee to do this preparation.
I make a motion that we accept and form this ad hoc committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to form the new 2016 Martin Luther King Day Celebration Committee. And that passes with a vote of five to zero. Very happy to be able to do this. Okay, Item B, project recommendations for the 2016 Pavement Management Program, CC-15-125. Mr. Galloway?
Yes, it's time of year to look at the recommendations, and I'd like to ask Dr. Peak, our Transportation Director, to give you an overview of the proposal.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our third year into the Pavement Management Program, and so it's an annual project recommendation that we brought to you each year on the streets that we recommend working on and the different strategies. Within the report, you see there's a little over 25 lane miles of streets included this year, and some of the highlights of that is major rehab work on Sanger Road between Sixth and 19th Avenue. I know that's a road we get a lot of comments about in the community, as well as South Country Club from Sixth all the way south to the city limits. We also have a number of streets listed for crack ceiling, panel, concrete replacement included with that list, and to be open to take any... included with that list and be open to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Some of what you mentioned for the different projects, would those be funded by the half cent sales tax if it's renewed?
Oh, the, you know, the Pavement Management Program currently has been supported through the General Fund. So it's not to say the half cent couldn't be used. We talked about asset management is one of the uses for the half cent transportation fund. So it could be used, but this is what was approved in the FY '16 budget through the General Fund appropriation of $3.375 million.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Councilor Weaver?
I'm not surprised to hear you wanting to recommend some work on Sanger. It needs some attention. We've all been hearing from people. Been hearing from people on McElroy, too. I'm thinking of Main Street East up to Skyline and beyond. When would you anticipate having some planned work for McElroy?
So McElroy, I mean, it is included in the list. Basically, we have from North Perkins Road to South Jardoe. That is, for this recommendation, that would be what we call concrete panel replacement, replacing the bad panels. The section of McElroy east of Jardoe was actually approved as part of the FY '15 project. That section, basically from Jardoe to the eastern city limits, will be reconstructed this spring. That contract was let last year for that. So we've got McElroy kind of covered with those, those two aspects.
How many, I know this is in the weeds, but how many panels do you think will be replaced?
I don't, I have that number off, off the top of my head.
We might need to replace them all.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, I mean, that note, that road would be a candidate for what we would call diamond grinding, potentially if we can get a lot of the panels replaced to smooth out some of the, the ride quality issues, of course, replacing the panels. We won't fix that, but right now, we saw the immediate need just fixing the worst panels out there.
Good.
Mayor?
I just wanted to say, Dr. Peak, how helpful it is to see the map of the proposed projects. And it's so nice to see the, even, you've mentioned this last time you presented this, how there are different parts of the city, every part of the city is affected. And it's, I just think the, the management system is, it just helps to know that there's a plan.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Is this something that we need to take action on tonight?
We're looking for a recommendation from council that you accept this list. If that's the case, you accept it. We will work to get the necessary contracts in place to get the work done.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations by Dr. Peak for the Pavement And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Peak. That takes us to ordinances, second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Items A and B, ordinances number 3326 and 3327 regarding the annexation and rezoning of the annexation property. I have been in contact with the attorney for the Pine County and we actually think we may have discovered a way to honor the gentleman's request with regard to the road maintenance, but we are about a week out from having the thing actually put together. So I'm asking that we table this item until November the 2nd.
Okay, and table, we do not need to take a vote?
You actually don't have to take any action on it tonight if, if that's, if that's acceptable to you, then we just move on to the other two that we're ready for reading.
Any objections? Let's move forward to item C on second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 332A, an ordinance rezoning a portion of tract of land located at 799 East Mercury Avenue, IG General Industrial Track, General Industrial, excuse me, to NTZ Neighborhood Transition Zone.
Counselors, any discussion on this? Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3328. And that ordinance is approved with a vote of five to zero, is adopted with a vote of five to zero. And that moves us to item D on second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3329, an ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land located at 799 East Mercury Avenue from IG General Industrial District to CS Commercial Shopping District.
Counselors, any discussion?
Motion to approve, adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3329. Please vote. And ordinance number 3329 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item 11, reports from officers and boards. Miscellaneous items from the city attorney, Mr. Dorman?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 250X Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Dan Galloway.
Okay. Item B, miscellaneous items from Mr. Galloway.
Just a reminder, it's getting closer and closer to November. We have an election coming up for the half penny sales tax. Really encourage everyone, check the city's website, look for scheduled meetings. There's a lot of office hour meetings that are being scheduled every day next, starting next week. You need to get informed. There's a lot of information on our website at the meetings and just encourage you, if you have any questions at all, call City Hall. Don't go uninformed. Find out about it and go vote. Thank you.
Counselors, any items?
Hey, I was really pleased to see the fountain downtown was, was orange. That must mean something's going on this week. Something about homecoming.
Could be.
It's always an excited, exciting time to see the orange and see the community pulling together to put on a massive event. It's going to be a lot of fun.
And this, this homecoming is, includes the city. It celebrates the city. Stillwater, still loyal, still true.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember who's the grand marshal.
Some rumor going around about.
And the T-shirt this year is really cool, too, and you know, I'm all about the T-shirt, so.
Sweatshirts, T-shirts, anything you want.
And Mayor, I might also mention, in the middle of this crazy week at the university, we're going, we're having the Higher Learning Commission on campus, being reaccredited every 10 years. It's always exciting and fun. So far, it's gone well, but just one more thing to make a busy week even busier, so. Things are going on on campus.
Campus is very busy and something to do every day of the week.
More than one thing, yeah. And, and speaking of orange, I hope that you'll take the accreditation committee down to the bridge on 51 and Sanger, which received a new fresh coat of OSU orange paint. Bridge is expected to be reopened in February. A photo of the orange bridge has been shared and viewed by millions, no, it says thousands, thousands.
Millions after this weekend with, with everybody coming in.
Millions of people watching this meeting will probably be.
Well, and I guess we're going on the homecoming route. Hopefully, everyone's noticed the new banners that are on downtown for the parade route, neat banners that say, "Welcome Home" and, and Stillwater. And also, I want to remind everyone, we have a wonderful downtown shuttle on game days. If you don't want to mess with the hassle of trying to figure out parking or pay 20, 25 dollars, not that I don't want to help people who are trying to make money on parking, but it's a wonderful opportunity to park your vehicle downtown Stillwater, catch the shuttle there at Lewis and Husband there. Takes you right to the north side of the stadium. I do it every time. It's fabulous. At the end of the game, you do have to wait a little bit. I know people say there's a line, but they've got two or three buses running at the same time. They do a great job. It is very, very convenient and it's a great way to also spend a little time downtown before or after the game, so.
You could make friends with the people tailgating by the stadium.
That's right, yeah. Wait, wait for the bus there. That's right.
And you can also shop local while you're waiting.
That's exactly right.
Okay, and if you haven't seen downtown's new statue, the Bronco Buster, it's now installed and it's in the center of the mini roundabout and it was paid for by Downtown Business Improvement District, not tax dollars. The landscaping is not quite finished, but it will feature natural landscaping and a year-round water feature. It's very cool.
It's interesting. I was talking to Amy Jo Frazier this morning and they just started putting it up last week and she took some pictures with her iPhone and put it on Facebook. As of this morning, there are over 19,000 people looking at it on Facebook, so it's a really popular new attraction.
It will be millions.
Oh, yes. The city has begun playground renovations to the Boomer Lake Playground. The playground will be replaced in sections to allow residents to continue playing on parts of the playground. Each section will be removed and replaced as individual segments, beginning with the small playground, then the large playground, and finally, the swings, and they will all be painted orange. No, I'm just kidding.
That's okay.
I think I have one last thing and that is you, if you want to be aware and keep up with what's happening in the city, there is a new video news update called Stillwater 360. It's a 60 seconds, keeps you updated on what's happening in the city and it's updated on the city's website as well as the social media sites every three days. So there's no excuse not to know what's going on in the city now. Stillwater 360.
That's right. And if there's not enough going on, then we also are welcoming the Kamioka delegation. They come into town Thursday night, they're here all weekend, and Stephanie Kinder and the Stillwater Community Center has done a great job with planning and making sure they are here during homecoming, which is just the perfect way to celebrate Stillwater. So very excited to meet the four delegates.
And I believe they'll be joining us here for a meeting next Monday evening.
They'll be here next Monday evening.
So people will have a chance to.
And we'll read a proclamation and I believe they get into, on a bus right after that, go back because they, they go home that night, so.
Okay.
Anyway, lots of fun. Anything else? Okay, I am going to recess this meeting and we're going to go to our SUA meeting and then we'll come back. I call the Stillwater Utilities Authority, October 19th meeting to order. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or is there a motion to approve the consent docket? Oh, there is no consent docket. Nope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. First two items.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And that's approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to general orders. Curbside Glass Recycling Pilot Program Review, SUA-15-53. Mr. Galloway?
Yes, Ian, would you, are you going to make this presentation, Ian?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members, trustees. Pleased to be here. I do have a handout for you real quick. I know that we had.
Thank you.
You guys look at it, but we have this.
Thank you. Thank you.
On, my name's Ian Rochon, City of Stillwater, Operations Department, Waste Management Division. In February this year, we started a curbside glass recycling pilot program. We did it for six months through July. Staff believes that the program was very successful. During that program, there were several things that we looked at and evaluated as well. When we started the program, our media department put it out and did a great job and let everybody know that the whole city was able to participate. We also had a recommendation of a tote size to use. We purchased 100 blue totes and gave those away to participating customers, even though on the survey, I received a survey, or response back that stated they received a tote even though they lived outside city limits, but they started recycling at the collection center because they had the tote. But we did purchase those and hand those out and we got a great response from those totes. They seemed to work very well. As the pilot program went along, we based our objectives on about a 10% participation rate and about a 1% diversion rate. Our participation rate is estimated to be about 1,300 households, which is a little bit under the 10% mark, and the diversion rate was going to be about 1% is what we were hoping for. We didn't quite hit that. We're at about a half a percent, but I still think that's very good for the amount of glass that we actually diverted. It was very good. There were some numbers on there and just to go over, kind of one that I'm impressed with, we were actually down about 14 tons over six months previous to our pilot program at the collection center, which definitely means that people are putting it out at the curb instead of taking it to the collection center. But not only that, we collected more than that. We actually collected nine more tons than what we normally would have. So we're definitely making progress. Like I said, the program overview, we wanted to, you know, review the method of collection, the cost of service, the frequency, the days of service, and the ease of participation. After the pilot program was done, we did put out a survey for the participants to respond. I'm very pleased to say that we had over 500 responses to the program. Very positive, most, most of them were very positive. I'm sure if anybody participated in it, the, the whole third week thing, I really thought that was a genius idea, but it could not be so genius. So that was probably our biggest complaint, but I think that if this program does go forward, we can solve that issue. So during that survey, we, we did get several results as far as what the people wanted. We did figure out that, you know, once a week was adequate. The tote size was adequate as well. Like I said before, the biggest thing was the service days, getting that out there and correct. So we came up with the two options for this, glass implementation. And option A would be an addition of waste management vehicle or vehicle for collection into employees. And what we did when we collected this glass or did this pilot program, we utilized a piece of equipment that was due to be replaced. And we no longer have that piece of equipment. It's been surplus. So to continue doing it the way we are, we would require two additional employees and a piece of equipment to continue the program. The papers that I just handed out to you guys are basically the services that we provide that are bundled together for the cost of your trash service. So there, there's many things on there. And the estimates that we have, that would be an annual cost if we were to purchase a vehicle and provide two employees to do this is $144,000. After that's all broken down, it's about 86 cents per month per customer, and that would be in addition to the bundled service. So that would, that would raise that bundled service by 86 cents per customer. The option B is also implementing the same program, picked up once a month as well, but instead of purchasing another vehicle and, and with the addition of two employees, we would like to recommend that we utilize our same employees and our same vehicles and we would substitute a yard waste pickup for a glass pickup. Currently, we service yard waste four weeks a month. Every week, we service yard waste. We also did account on our yard waste customers during this part, during part of the pilot program, when this idea kind of popped in our heads because we were realizing that it was not going to be a cheap service. You usually get about 100 to maybe 150 more yard waste customers per week than what you do glass. Now, the weight is a little bit different. You definitely get a lot more weight out of the yard waste, but we feel that we can take care of that. That won't be a problem. So with utilizing the employees that we have and the equipment that we have, you come up to about 5 cent per customer per month, and that's basically paying for the containers because in our survey, we did find that the customers did want us to provide containers. I think that's a great idea. It kind of keeps the, the look of what we have out there already. And we feel, staff feels that waste management can. can cover that cost within its revenues already. So we feel that that service can just be added in without the additional cost. It is our recommendation, the staff's recommendation, that the trustees approve the additional glass pickup with option B. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Guys happy?
Counselor.
I don't expect you to have an answer today, but...
Do my best.
I think, I like, from what you said, a little bit that you said, I think item B makes sense to at least try, see if that's successful before we break over to buying the equipment and hiring two more employees. But I'm curious, if you factored into this, you're going to have reduced tipping fees, I would assume, because you're not putting as much in the landfill in addition to selling the glass. Is that netting out in your cost here of five cents?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes, sir, it is. We did take that in consideration, that we will be paying less tipping fees at the recycling center rather than the landfill. And those, it's nine dollars and eleven cents, to be exact, per ton. So yes, that has been factored in, yes, sir.
Is there an opt-out? So if I didn't want to recycle, could I get my trash picked up that day instead of getting recycling? Correct?
It's, no. What it would be is, what we propose to do is, your first collection of the month would be glass, and then the following collections, your following collections there on out for the rest of the month would be yard waste. So there wouldn't be any opt, because what we're going to be doing is utilizing those two employees that would be normally picking up yard waste with that vehicle, they're going to do glass rather.
I guess, just a little concerned that, I mean, what if not many people recycle? Then what are we, I mean, are they going to have, I mean, are they going to be done by eleven? If, I mean, I mean, for instance, in some of these, the stats say there was, what, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine collected in that month? And so, is that enough to, if they're only picking up two-hundred-and-sixty-nine bins versus, I mean, how many trash bins do they pick up a day?
Well, they wouldn't be normally picking up trash. They would be picking up yard waste. On an average collection day for glass, it was approximately about two-hundred customers.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think I'm confused.
Yeah, you are.
It's yard waste.
It's yard waste, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Forget my question.
That's all right.
So my trash is still going to get picked up?
Yeah.
We're not going to be picking up trash.
I think more people will end up using this service if they have a bin.
Yes, absolutely.
I believe one hundred percent you're correct. We are proposing that we purchase five thousand bins, and that is for the anticipation of the program growing. If we've learned anything from our previous pilot program, we started out with about the same expectation, smaller town. It was a little bit higher participation rate when we started the curbside single-stream. But taking into consideration that there's not a lot of glass products you can buy on the shelf, but there is, and it's out there. And I even had a comment on the survey as well, that said if it continued, they would actually try to buy more products in glass containers, since we will have something like that. So I do anticipate that this program does grow, just as the same. And with our wonderful media department, we'll definitely get the word out there that it's there.
So it'll kind of be the same process? You just sign up for it? It'll be, I think, you just come pick it up, or it'll be delivered, and then?
It will be the same process. They will be serial numbered totes. You will have your tote. It might be a little bit more difficult keeping them there, because they are smaller, but it will be the same process. It'll be a sign-up. We'll deliver it to your house. Yes, sir.
Do I understand this option would add a nickel to everybody's monthly bill?
That is, that's what it came up to be, but staff believes, our staff is recommending that the waste management cover that expense. I believe, if I remember correctly, I think the yearly total is ninety-one hundred dollars.
So there's not a proposed rate increase at this time?
That is correct.
That's what I heard him say.
That's correct, yeah.
I just wanted to say that Mr. Groschong has done some presentations around the city, and I've heard great feedback about that. And I also would like to thank everybody who answered the survey. We've done a lot of citizen survey things, and there are a lot more coming up, and it's a great way to participate in your own city. So, and we love the glass recycling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Trustees, is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
What do we do? Life up?
Do you need a motion?
Do we need to vote on this?
Well, I didn't hear a staff recommendation.
Alternative B was to replace one of the yard wastes per month with glass.
Okay, then if you want to adopt staff recommendation, then it would be your motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendation for glass recycling. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. Now, does anyone wish to make a motion to adjourn SUA?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. And it is adjourned with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to our CEDA meeting. I call the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting to order for October nineteenth. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item, or is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
I'd like to remove item B for discussion. So motion approved without item B.
Okay, second, okay. Motion and a second to approve the consent docket without item B. And that is, it is approved without item B with a vote of five to zero. And that takes us to item four, items removed from the consent docket. So item B.
Counselor, here. I get a rundown. I don't know who's in charge. I see members of the committee out in the audience. I don't know who's charged with, just kind of updating us on what we're doing and moving forward.
Yeah, at the...
I'm over here for the chairman. I apologize.
At the meeting, CEDA, the trustees selected ADG as the urban planner for us to negotiate a contract with. A committee was set up of Mr. Dormand, Mr. Weaver, and myself. We met with Mike Mize and Nicole Goodman of ADG. We discussed with them at length all of the items and the scope we've discussed here over the last several months. They put together a scope of work based on that and a contract. The three members of the committee reviewed it and found that it was all, seemed to be very closely in line with what the council has discussed. Their proposed cost is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. As I pointed out to the trustees in the memo, you have two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand uncommitted in your operating balance. We had looked at that source for this contract when we first started talking about it. So coming back from the committee, we have, Mr. Dormand looked at the legality of the proposed contract, made a few changes to make it consistent with our trust policies, submitted those to ADG Company, and they have reviewed it, and we've negotiated back and forth. They have signed a final copy. It's the one I sent to council, and it's ready for trustee action, and I'd recommend approval.
Mr. Galloway, do you remember what the original proposed price was?
It was a little over that. I believe it was two-hundred-and-seventeen, I believe. And we were able to shave eighteen off. There are some options also. I think in the contract, and Mr. Mize is here too, he could answer it, but he broke it down into five phases with costs. I think as we go through the phases during the year, if something were, if the council continues to work with the consultant, if we get into that third phase and we see the fourth or fifth component could be modified somehow, that's open for some negotiation. But, and also, as you get toward the end, you have options for possible asking for other items to be processed as well. But this is the basic contract to start with. And if this were to be approved, ADG has realized it's been a while. They'd like to help the council get this started as quickly as possible. We have next Monday on our regular schedule as a study session. It would be a great opportunity for ADG to meet with the council and kind of, again, to discuss in detail the council's perception and what we're looking for, what, how they can work with the council, how they're going to work with the public, and go through the entire process is kind of a precursor to the whole program. So this has been thoroughly vetted. We had, I believe, thirteen companies present, and ADG was the one that sorted out, and they've got a lot of great experience. They've done a lot of working up on the city for maps and other major projects. So they have a great deal of experience getting a lot of community input from all the major interests. And I think that's the one thing that we really weighed heavily on, is we have a lot of stakeholders in this community, not just the city government, but private developers, the landowners, the area, the entire community, the university. Everybody's affected by this, and they have an outstanding record of being able to assimilate all those interests and bring them back to the council. So that's kind of the process we've been through.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B on the consent docket. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to general orders and a presentation of Commercial Economic Development District.
You want me to make that brief?
Yes.
Let me, let me, I have a presentation that was planning to give. It would take probably fifteen or twenty minutes, and I'll leave that as an option. Most of you have heard parts of it before. And basically, in a nutshell, what I would say in that presentation is we move forward in trying to build healthy community, neighborhood retail centers as we try to develop major retail shopping opportunities in our community. When you really look at our community closely, we have roughly six areas in our community that are major commercial shopping centers. The downtown, which we now talk about, the Bid District, and then you look, it's interesting, when you look at the map of our commercial development and commercial zoning, if you go north on Main Street, the old route, the original route of Highway one seventy-seven up through Boomer and Washington, that is a longstanding corridor of development that's kind of going through some changes and redevelopment. It's different than downtown. And then if you go over on Perkins, which is a new alignment of one seventy-seven, when that state highway moved over there, we saw that Perkins Road corridor of commercial development. That's a unique zone. It's more strip centers, shopping centers, large shopping centers. It's a different nature of commercial. We've got a lot of commercial on the south and east part of our community, on the east side of Fifty-First and going south on Highway one seventy-seven. The point is, there's five or six districts. Also, west of the creek, when you're going on Highway fifty-one west, when you get west of Sanger Road, there's a tremendous amount of developable land that's zoned commercial. And the council has said several times, and we've discussed in your strategic planning session and other sessions, that we really need to take some steps to start motivating and making development of the West District more active. The purpose of this explanation tonight was that all six of those districts in Stillwater are unique. I think we have to look at each one uniquely and try to find how we can best provide assistance to our local landowners, our local developers, and local business owners in each of those districts, and develop unique tools for each one. And we have to really take into consideration the neighborhoods that they're serving, that we don't create competing interest in the community. I think probably the most, the largest acreage where we're likely to get large shopping centers and large commercial developments, not just single-store developments, and I'm not talking about those, is on the western part of Stillwater. In order to give the council a future ability to work with our local landowners out there and local developers who are wanting to develop twenty acres, thirty acres, forty acres, sixty acres, we're going to have to have the ability to enter some agreements. I'm not saying they're necessarily cash incentives, but they're long-term agreements. And that's made possible through the Neighborhood Redevelopment Act in the state statute whereby you create TIF districts. And one of the best tools that's been used in the state is to take districts, just like that western area, overlay it with a TIF district. And that's not associated with anybody's project. But when you once create that, it gives the council the future ability to enter into development projects. And so the whole purpose of this presentation was to request that you authorize the city attorney and staff to begin to put together the process for creating a TIF district. We still have a TIF committee from our first process. It goes through a TIF committee. We develop plans. It goes through public hearings at the Planning Commission, and eventually comes back here for adoption. But I just thought it would be best to get the trustees' blessing and authorization from Mr. Dormand and staff to proceed with starting that process. So I would be glad to forego the presentation, and my recommendation is to ask trustees to authorize Mr. Dormand and staff to start working on a TIF district for the West Zone.
And that is a lengthy process.
It's going to take three, four months.
Okay. Counselors, any questions? Any comments?
Well, I would just say that, you know, this is something we've been talking about for years, that the Bid District, look at the success we've had. Are there other areas in the community? I like to hear that you're thinking about more than just one more, that we could have some unique TIF districts all around town. And I think that's a good idea. I'm certainly supportive of starting some initial planning.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to...
Initiate a TIF district.
Well, hold on. I'm sorry. I'm not ready. Wait, I thought we were just talking about to look at the districts and see what the development...
For other parts of town, but for initiating a TIF district for the West.
Just for the West District only.
Just for the West Side.
I don't know about that.
The, I've given the council documents, copies of the presentation, but also a paper which discusses the various districts in the community. I think you need time to digest that. You need to look at it. You need to get constituents' inputs. We need to take some time and decide how we're going to address economic development in each one of those districts. But I think the West is something we've all seen. It's well-defined. It's separate. It's unique, and I think we know what the tools are for that. And so that's why, again, the presentation, I wasn't going to ask you to adopt the whole thing. That's too much for one night. But I think this is just to initiate the TIF area on, in the West. And even if you create a TIF district, it's no commitment to ever enter any agreement. You can have a TIF district out there and never enter one incentive agreement ever. But you have to have it in place to give you the option to do that. And so it's just an enabling process, is all that it is.
I'd like some time, but if you guys are all ready to vote, that's on you. I mean, I just, I'd like some time to think about it at least, but, I mean, I'm one of five, so.
I think that's wise, and I think you'll have the time to think about it as a staff, you know, start planning.
It's a multi-step process. You're going to get, the initial part would be to bring back to your committee a copy of the plan, the size of the area, all the parameters. And so there's going to be a process. That's why it takes three or four months, so you all have plenty of time to go through.
I understand this process. I was here when we did the last one, but I just don't know if I'm even ready to start this process.
Okay.
Would you like to wait a week?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Yeah. I mean, that gives me at least a little bit of time to think about it.
Well, and I actually have to come back with a resolution for you to authorize the establishment of a TIF committee, because although we have the committee members who are ready to serve, you actually have to authorize...
Right, that would be the first step.
...in that process. So if it's all right with you, we could just bring it all back and do it that same night.
Let's do that.
That's a good second. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
That's perfect for me.
Everybody, I do appreciate this potential business development plan for the entire city.
And it's...
Very well done.
It's really, it's very interesting. I mean, we all, we live here every day, but when you really start looking at the makeup of those districts, they're so unique, and a lot of it's driven by the neighborhoods. And a lot of those services are to the neighborhood. And I think we lose sight of that sometimes.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing about this at a later date after we vote on the TIF district resolution. All right, trustees, is there a motion to adjourn? CEDA? Yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. Please vote. And that meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to... And that meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero, and that, I will now reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. Is there a motion and a second to move into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to move into executive session. And with a vote of five to zero, we will be moving into executive session. I would like to take this time to say thank you to our audience, and especially to all of the reporting students who I see sitting here. And we will now move into our...
You all look so happy. Really happy to be here, aren't you?
Well, they're getting extra credit, aren't they?
This is an assignment, though, isn't it? Yes, it is. So, okay, we will move into executive session.
Whether you're shopping, dining, or doing business in Stillwater, we would like to take the opportunity to let you know about public parking in three areas around Stillwater: downtown Stillwater, Campus Corner, and the strip on Washington Street. In these areas, many of the free city parking spots, mostly in the street, are timed. Time ranges from 30 minutes to three hours, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and these spaces are not timed on weekends and city-recognized holidays. The purpose for these timed parking spots is to give everyone equal opportunity to a parking space, which is not only good for other people visiting these areas, but is a benefit to the businesses in these areas as well. Now, say, for instance, you're cited for overtime parking as you're inside a business. Well, instead of paying the $10 citation, you can easily bring it back to one of more than 200 businesses in these three areas to have the ticket validated. All you have to do is give them the ticket, and that's it. They'll take care of the rest. For more information about public parking spaces, the validation program, or tickets, call the municipal court at the City of Stillwater at 405-742-8255, or visit stillwater.org.
This is Kyle Gibbs with the Stillwater Police Department. When parking in a timed parking space around Stillwater, you may notice a chalk mark on your tire. Parking enforcement uses the chalk marks to monitor vehicles. A parking attendant will mark a vehicle and return later to see if the mark is still present. If your parking time is almost up, move your vehicle to another spot. The attendant will notice the mark changed and faded and will not write a citation. If your parking time is almost up, do not attempt to remove the mark. Removing the mark will result in a fine of $549. This has been a public service announcement from the Stillwater Police Department and the City of Stillwater.